Hey John or Joe, can you hear me?
Okay.
Yeah, a little bit.
Uh, President, can you try that again? I have the sound on. Brad, can you hear us okay? Thank you.
Council will call them into order for the record. It is November eighth, twenty twenty-three. Um, at four thirty-four P M. We'll begin this afternoon's work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Overton.
Here.
Councilwoman Burrow.
Sure.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Here. First item up is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
We approve the agenda as published.
Second.
Have a motion, second, to approve the agenda as published. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the agenda is adopted. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
We approve the consent agenda as published for the mayor to sign and clerk for the test. Second.
Have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the consent agenda is agreed to. There were no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will go on to our proclamations. Our first proclamation of the evening will be the Rocky Mountain High School Girls Golf State Champions Day. If I could get Coach Gibbs and the team to join me at the podium, please. Now, I would like to say that we're getting tired of this, but we're really not. Um, it's a, it's great that we're here again to celebrate the Rocky Mountain High School Girls Golf Team. So we will go ahead and do a proclamation and then just like in years past, if you would set your name on the record and the year that you were in school. Um, I know the team is not the exact same, just the results are the same. So it's great that we get to continue to celebrate everybody. So. Whereas being a Rocky Mountain High School Girls Golf Team player is more than teeing off, having strong iron shots, shipping up and down for par and striving for a hole in one. It is training to build leadership, character, confidence and resilience. All traits need to succeed on the green, in the classroom and in the real world. And whereas the hard work and dedication of the Rocky Mountain Girls Golf Team and coaches has resulted in the fourth straight state title for the school. And whereas the Grizzlies took the five A girls golf state championship after a dominating performance at the district three tournament. And whereas the girls golf team put in time and effort throughout the season and were able to see their perseverance pay off in the championship game, proving team members were in it to win it. And whereas the leadership training and discipline of their coach helped all team members to focus their talents, passion, determination to become a winning team with each player making valuable contributions to their victory. Therefore, I am Mayor Robert E. Simpson hereby proclaim November eighth, twenty twenty-three as Rocky Mountain High School Girls Golf Team State Champions Day in the city of Braden and call upon the community to join me in congratulating the Rocky Mountain High School Girls Golf Team on their remarkable athletic achievement and for representing Meridian so proudly in the state tournament. They had the state day of November twenty twenty-three. So on behalf of the city, congratulations on your success and thank you for being here.
My name's Eliana Haves and I'm a freshman.
My name's Natalie Natchenko and I'm a sophomore.
My name's Maggie Urien and I'm sophomore.
My name is Anna De Bell and I'm a senior.
My name is Jane Berry and I'm a senior.
I'm Coach Gibbs. My third year coaching.
And you're under no affirmative obligation to stay unless you really need to credit for something in school. So. Appreciate it. Thank you. And with that, we're gonna move on to our next proclamation. Um, Minnie, if you would like to come forward. So yesterday I had the privilege of presenting this proclamation. Um, at an event that was being held by the Idaho Veterans Chamber of Commerce regarding, and my proclamation was Veterans and Spouse Week. So I may read the proclamation, but I'm sure um, the Senator's just gonna tell you a little bit more about everything that they did yesterday and was what they've been working on. So. Whereas nearly one out of ten small businesses across the United States is veteran owned and are a pillar of our economy and contribute to the foundation of our nation. From Main Street storefronts to virtual high-tech startups. And whereas veteran and spouse small business owners are resilient, disciplined and mission oriented, thanks to their military service and committed to serving our country and communities. And whereas when we resolve ourselves to strengthen our communities, we must empower and support the giants that veteran and spouse entrepreneurs are in our economy. And whereas the Idaho Veterans and Spouse Small Business Week highlights the programs and services available to veteran and spouse entrepreneurs through so many resource partners at the state and federal level. And whereas the state of Idaho and the city of Braden support and join in this national effort to help Americans veterans and spouse small business owners start, grow and recover their businesses after disaster and help our communities thrive. Therefore, I am Mayor Robert E. Simpson hereby proclaim November sixth, eleven, twenty twenty-three as veterans and spouse small business week in the city of Braden and call upon the citizens to join me in recognizing and celebrating the veteran owned businesses in our community. They this, the seventh day of November twenty twenty-three. So. Today I'm actually gonna give you the proclamation, but we appreciate you and all that you are doing. And if you'd like to say a few words, then we'll do a picture.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this actually started with Governor Little. He did this last year for us and we decided to take it across the state and have a couple of cities. Um, that joined in with wanting to do just this week and recognizing and just creating more awareness really is what this is doing for our veteran and spouse community. Business owners that have their different challenges and struggles uh as business owners and they are underserved to some degree and do need connection and resources and support. So I just appreciate um not only the proclamation that you did for us, but just all of the support. You've been at ribbon cutting ceremonies with us supporting our veteran business owners. Um, you've been at the Purple Heart Luncheon honoring our Purple Heart recipients. And it's just been really great to to have your support. So I'm excited that you're elected again and look forward to continuing to work with you, sir.
With that, council, we'll move on to item twenty on the agenda, which is a public hearing for Parks and Recreation Department Lakeview Golf Course. Propose fee increases. We will open this public hearing with comments from Mr. Barton.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Uh, we were here a couple of weeks ago on October seventeenth and presented uh some new fees for uh twenty twenty-four at Lakeview Golf Course. At that time, there really wasn't any questions and um so we've noticed those fees and we're back this evening to uh get a resolution, new fee resolution adopted. With that, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Mike. Council any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Overton.
I have a question, but I have a statement that I think needs to be said. And goes for an entire Parks Department. I continue to be impressed about the high quality and variety of activities our Parks Department gives to everyone in our city. For a variety of different activities that may not be for a whole group of people, but for a different selection and slice of our population. For the golf course specifically, these upgrades you've made to the pathway system, to the irrigation system, to the clubhouse and the future permanent upgrades to the restrooms has done an amazing job in lifting up better than I think it's ever been, the quality of what we have as a golf course in the city. And I'm a huge fan of what you've done. It's that Meridian way, bringing the quality up to what we bring to the city in every way we do it. And I think these fee increases are necessary as we're providing a much better product than we've ever had in the city or our golf course, and it keeps us competitive and continues to keep our revenue stream coming in.
Thank you very much. Council, any additional questions for staff? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. This request, I said, we had nobody sign up on.
Mr. Mayor, nobody signed up.
Okay, and we have nobody but staff online. Is there anybody from the public who plays golf would like to come forward and and come make comments on this public hearing? I see that. I don't see a yes on that. But do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton.
With no further public comments, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? If not, I'll favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Overton, item number twenty-one?
Yes.
Next item, as item twenty-one, a resolution twenty-three dash two four two three, Councilman Overton.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution, resolution twenty-three dash two four two three, a resolution adopting new fees of the Park, Meridian Parks and Recreation Department authorizing the Meridian Parks and Recreation Department to collect such fees and providing an effective date.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, is there discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borton.
Just, just a brief comment on it. Um, part of what makes what we're doing successful is it's based in large part upon a policy, the cost recovery work that was done. Um, how our golf course is gonna fit within that spectrum of cost recovery and I've been a pretty strong advocate of trying to reduce fees and lower fees for the golf course, but I also understand that adherence, once we establish an objective policy and adhere to it, that that's really important. I think what you're doing here in this resolution meets exactly what we've set forth in the policy. So this is just one example of many we have when a policy's been enacted. Now it's for us to make the decision to, to follow the steps that we've put in that policy. So. This exemplifies it perfectly. So. It's further reason why I'm supportive of the resolution.
Any additional comments? If not. It's the end of roll call. I'm brain brain fuzzy. If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Strater.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
Burrow.
Aye.
Borton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries and I am agreed to. Thank you for that one. Um, and I think that we'll just bring you right on back up for M twenty-four, which is Discovery Park Phase Two Tennis Pickleball Court Lighting Update Conversation.
You, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, so last week we opened up phase two of Discovery Park. Um, it was ahead of schedule and we're under budget, which is really good news. Um, part of what we did during this construction is we installed conduits uh that go from um a location over to the tennis court and pickleball court in case we wanted to install lighting at some time in the future. If we didn't do this, it would be highly unlikely that we'd ever go back because we'd have to tear out a lot of grass and concrete and that. So we have these conduits in place. Uh, we have junction boxes in place. We've gotten um um calls over time for lights around pickleball courts. And um so what we did, um, so part of the, part of the guaranteed maximum price to build phase two of Discovery Park. It included the sum of all the bids, the uh general conditions. Um, and also a contingency amount. Um, the contingency amount right now is largely unspent. And that is four and a half percent of the total cost of the project. It's about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we wanted to just take the step to get some pricing to see what it would take. Um, because we got these, because we've been getting these requests, we wanted to see what it would take to actually go ahead and finish this and put the lights in around the court. So we got a price back from our low bid electrical contractor of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to to do these lights. So our request and our discussion here today is to see if um finishing the, installing the lighting at Discovery Park is something that uh you might want to use some of that contingency for. Um, the contingency is a hundred percent from impact fees. Uh, just, that's noteworthy. And part of what we would do with this system, we checked it, it's, it falls within our existing uh C Z C. So there's no issues there. We would have a couple of timing sets on there. We'd have a master timer. So the whole system would be energized until a certain time at night and then you would go to each pole and set a timer for an hour that would count down. So it's not like you could have be out there with the lights on all night long. We would determine that maybe in the summer. For instance, it could be the whole system off at ten P M. Um, and then during the winter, the whole system could go off at, say, eight P M. Or the shoulder season could be eight P M. or nine P M. We haven't quite worked out the complete logistics, but um just from the sake of keeping people in the, in the park after dark. Um, we already have softball fields that are lit and then these fields would kind of fit in that same, same use. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Council questions, comments?
Here.
Councilman Strater.
Thank you, Mike. Um, does the park have hours? I just had kind of a basic question, like, do we keep certain hours in the park? How does this extend the usability of the park?
We do. Um, generally it's dawn to dusk in in parks, but where, where we have um softball fields that are lit, we have people in the park until ten thirty or eleven o'clock in the summer. And it's generally confined to the softball areas, but realistically the whole, the entire park. So it's just, some of it's dark and um, it's, there's, there's a little bit of gray area there. Um, but it's worked for years where we haven't had any I mean, had any trouble with that. And um, you know, when the lights go off, the park's closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Shatter.
Are you concerned at all about this kind of opening up a big gray area in terms of other areas of the park being used after dark? I, it sounds fine, but it's like, I just want to make sure we really thought it through.
It's, that's a great question, and I don't think that this will any more than, than the current softball fields would. And the lighting is L E D lighting that's pretty directional, so it's confined to just the court. Uh, we, we have a, a lighting study that there's very little spill into other areas. Like, it's not gonna, it's not gonna light the playground. Um. So. You know, we've been by um when, when there's softball games going on and there may be um a little bit of use that spills out into the park, but it's, doesn't seem to be um rampant and people are pretty well behaved. When it's, when it's dark, you can't, you can't go over into a grass area and throw a frisbee. It's, it's dark. These lights are very directional.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pro.
Thank you. Um, so I know that all of the indoor courts get really full in the winter time. Um, do we have any other courts that are lit in the city?
Mr. Mayor, we, that's what we do not.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mr. Mayor.
To, 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 to get back on what Mike said, if we were to discover a problem that it was becoming more problematic where people sort of not, weren't just in the area that was lit and maybe kind of the fringe around the area that was lit, but becoming more problematic with complaints for neighbors and things like that. Again, our ordinance does allow us to designate this area is open and that's all that's open. So the rest of the park still could be closed. So we could certainly button that up in in ordinance without it being problematic, but as Mike said, we really haven't had an issue where there really isn't people creating problems or mischief in other areas of the park. Um, while people are over in the softball areas and they're doing something else somewhere else, but if that were to be a problem, we could certainly address it.
I think that there might be a few problems in parks where we do things at night. Um, such as movie night. I mean, so I, I, I saw the lieutenant getting ready to make a comment, so I thought I'd open that up for him, just so for prep, for information.
Uh, Mayor, members of council, I, I think the biggest thing is, is proper signage, designating those locations, which then will allow us to have the ability to enforce those areas that aren't um supposed to be being used by the general public. I think that would help us a lot because we, that gray area does make it challenging if we do have problems and we uh have, are having to take enforcement action and not being able to because of the gray.
Councilman Strater, do you have any more?
I was gonna be asking what the communication plan was to alert the public and just make it obvious of when when, 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 when and what parts of the park can be used. I feel like if we're turning lights on, we're inviting people. Um, just want to make sure it's not confusing for people.
Councilwoman, I, I think that's, I think that with a little bit of increased signage, um, we can come up with uh something that fits into our current ordinance and develop a sign so people do know that uh it's confined to lit areas only. And we, we haven't had um you know, at Story, at Story Park, um, and Discovery, where we currently have softball fields that are lit um and a baseball field. We haven't really had any problem with people thinking the entire park is open. It's been pretty quiet. But I think the increased signage and communication with the public is a great idea.
Council, would you like to see a budget amendment officially? That was the direction that occurred previously, even though there is a authority, it, it, council didn't necessarily want contingency to be used. Um, I know the just looking for you, how you would like to see this come back or if you would like to see it come back.
Well, I'm, I think that might have been a different project where they didn't want to use the, the contingency on this. There is spending authority for this. It's currently in the contract.
It was general guidance that council didn't want us using. That's why we're here to begin with. Is to try to figure out how council wants to handle these things. Even when you have the spending authority, it's something that wasn't originally contemplated as part of the project.
So my, my recollection is, was with the golf course irrigation system. And the use of the contingency would be for something entirely different, such as uh, it was the patio shade. So we did bring back a budget amendment for the patio shade where this is um, is in the conquer, on contract and we're, we're just, we're just asking for spending authority, uh, want to be uh completely transparent as far as our scope goes, and this would be an increase over the original scope. But um, we have the budget and we don't need to do a, a guaranteed maximum price amendment of any kind. Um, it's a, it's an authorization to our contractor to proceed.
And I, I would caution to, to not take that too far because that's contingency for every single project, you know? Uh, that would mean that every change order would need a budget amendment. So I want to try to stay away from that. This, this, like I said, this money is budgeted. It's in the actual agreement already for our uh construction manager. And this would just be authorizing additional work to complete a project. The, the wiring, the conduit, that's all in the scope currently. This is just installing, purchasing and installing the lights, I believe.
Mr. Mayor.
Was that Councilman Borton?
Sounds.
You're my bad eye.
I'm, I'm piecing it together. I appreciate the input from both. I think it makes great sense with that explanation. And, and I appreciate the attention to detail.
And and I appreciate the attention to detail and in transparency for sure. But at least even on the public record, talk about this, explain what we're doing and why. Even if it doesn't necessitate a budget amendment, seems appropriate to make it known publicly what's happening. So it seems to fit. Impact fee funding is designated for it. Sounds like a great addition.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'd like to hear from Director Sidaway if this leaves an adequate amount of impact fees for other priorities or how this might impact other projects that he'd like to do.
Yes, I would be supportive. I believe that this, these are funds that have already been encumbered for Discovery Park, and it's just spending them on Discovery Park where they've already been encumbered. So yes, I believe it's appropriate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I appreciate that. But the reason I'm mentioning it and part of the whole contingency thing is if it's not spent, right? The contingency would go back and so it could be used for something else. So that's the reason I'm asking. But it sounds like you're very supportive of it. You feel like this is a good addition to the park. Doesn't leave you concerns about the adequacy of the impact fees for your other priorities where you might need more.
You can always use more impact fees, but I do feel that this is a good use. So I'm supportive. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so counsel, would you like to, someone like to make a motion? Or is a head nod? How would people prefer to give direction on the spending issue?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Just move it through with a motion. And if it's not necessary, couldn't hurt. Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the request to utilize the the impact fees available for Discovery Park Phase Two tennis and pickleball court lighting as presented.
A motion of second, is there further discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Guys have it and direction is given. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item up is item twenty three, which is a civic block update. Mr. Miles.
Good afternoon, everybody. Just handing around a simple timeline. I did email that to you all this morning, but I know many of you might not have gotten to it. Really, my job today is just to give a little bit of background of how we got here in the timeline of the Hunter lateral relocation project, as well as as it relates to the civic block project. And wanted to just make sure that you're all aware and everybody's on the same page, public's on the same page of where we stand today. Some of the actions that have occurred through the last few months. Beginning really with April eighteenth, twenty twenty three. If you recall, there was a first amendment to the memorandum of understanding between River Caddis, M D C and the city that addressed allowing the city to construct a project, as well as the extend the M O A timeline, which gave River Caddis time to continue to work through the economic challenges they were having, see where they could make the project viable or not. That led to August action where you all approved the potentially a placeholder budget amendment to allow for the funding, repay the River Caddis if they were to forward. Fast forward into October, we progress through the process as well to help that. See bids back and then just on October thirty first, we got the letter from River Caddis that they were not going forward. That sort of leaves us in a position where, where I summarize is there's four pending actions that are coming forward. And we want to make sure that you're all aware and everybody's in general alignment of where those are going. One being that we, before terminating the M O A, we need to consider approval of purchasing the plans from River Caddis so that the city owns the rights to the plans and can move forward if they choose to when the project's under construction. We actually have plans. So before terminating the M O A, we have to take the action in the M O A. That's step one. Step two would be, I looked at Mr. Neri a little bit, but there's a legal action within the M O A. Say we're also terminating, we agree. Through the M O A. And then third and fourth would be approving a budget amendment for the construction of the Hunter lateral that the city would be constructing. On separately is our project. With the intent of whatever happens to the civic block is the later conversation between you all, M D C, of what's best for that property. And then finally approving the construction. Those are sort of the four actions that we see coming back to you next week. If there's general alignment, which I think there is, but we just wanted to come let you all know where we stand and what we think are the right next steps to happen, make sure everybody's on the same page. And if you have any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Borden.
Said four actions next week, wouldn't all four wouldn't be something to act on next week.
So, Mr. Mayor and Councilman Borden, that would be our intent. We could move forward with buying the plans, purchasing the plans and terminating the M O A. We could also move forward with awarding the contract and approving a budget amendment and awarding the contract as well.
And if anyone's not approved, then the next ones don't happen. So it's, but those will be the four steps that would be necessary in order to do projects for the project.
Councilman Pro was next.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Could you clarify the role of the city and M D C in these four steps? And, you know, which party is doing what? And then is, are we to understand that that none of the funds are coming from, from M D C dollars? This is this is going to be funded entirely by by general fund monies?
That's my understanding at this point in time, the city's in the driver's seat of the project.
Councilman Schrader.
Mr. Mayor. Is there a discussion around the purchase price of the plans?
Mr. Mayor, there has been. And so through Public Works Department, they've been working with River Caddis. The purchase price that has been invoiced and reviewed by the Public Works, invoiced by River Caddis and reviewed by Public Works is roughly ninety three thousand dollars. That includes their design work, their architectural fees that they've done. The bid price from the constructions roughly six hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. So you add those two together along with contingency and there's construction services and some fees for street lighting as well. The budget amendment, you'd be sitting around the eight hundred and one thousand dollars. It's again, the six eighteen.
And if we were to purchase our own plans, how do we think that price compares? Is it similar?
Good question. I think general standard practices is you're in that project cost.
Dave, can you get closer to the mic?
Sorry. General, general practice, you're in that ten to twenty percent of a project cost for design plans? So you're probably right in that ballpark.
I think what I'm struggling with a little bit, at some point, it makes sense to do the Hunter lateral. I think the main driver of that was the civic block project. That project's not moving forward. I don't, I guess I don't really feel that there is an urgency, besides perhaps urban renewal around the timing. So I, I don't really know if I view it, I guess maybe clarification, whether you all are advocating for steps one through four or some of the steps, because it doesn't seem like they're, you know, all required to happen, right?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I think at this point in time, staff are advocating to move the project forward. And primarily what what we think about is knowing that a project wants to be considered or something eventually will happen. The property becomes much more useful and more attractive when there's an improvement made to it. If there's Hunter lateral relocation, from what we heard from River Caddis, it's been that that was a big component of the challenges they were facing. You have a much more usable project or property. One of the infrastructure impediments out of, that's been the discussion the city's been having of, well, you improve the land to the point where it becomes easier for a project to happen, whatever that by getting the Hunter lateral to a point where it's now not a factor.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Yeah, just, I think it could, I have a couple of concerns. A concern that I have is I don't, I don't view it that the Hunter lateral is the main obstacle to the success of a project on this site at this time. And it, it looks like construction costs, financing costs, interest rate environment are a big factor. I don't know that the under lateral costs in the scheme of a project of this size would be a main impediment. It's also where we're using our current community center. So the small and I guess Steve Sidaway would say the inadequate community center, but that is where we're, where we do have a community center. And it may take us time, you know, to to get our ducks in a row, to find a way to pay for for a bigger one. And I think we should take our time. I don't think there's a rush. So I, I guess I'm struggling around the urgency around timing, why we need to do this now. Makes sense to me that, you know, at some point, we need to back out of the M O A. Like that, that seems pretty obvious if the other party is, then we need to do that. But yes, I'm just not, maybe I just need to think about it more, but I'm not understanding why we would move forward on the Hunter lateral at this time. I don't see how it's in our best interest.
And just from a practical standpoint, I think one thing we found is the Hunter lateral can only be done during a certain time. So unless you align a future project, you could still delay a project by up to a year without it being done. You're correct, we don't know when we're going to move forward, but we know if this, this can only be done during certain times of the year in order to achieve the goal for that right opportunity. Don't disagree, it may not produce a product in the next year or two, but it doesn't impact the community center. There's no impact to that. It actually could make it a viable place to put the community center if we wanted to put it there in the future because we've eliminated that, that challenge of not being able to build over that space. Makes the property more valuable for if we do put it out for an R F P, so we will recoup more of the costs. And unless Warren wants to tell me differently, construction prices are not going down. So eventually it will cost somebody more. If the viewpoint is it would be the developer side of it, that's okay. But I think that I'd like to think that we're going to recover a good portion of our costs from doing this because the price of the land that would be done through an M O U would be different than the three hundred thousand that we were doing before. What will the price of that land be in two years? I couldn't say just like the construction cost. So it is just really, are we preparing this for what we think we want to ultimately become? Or do we not? And we may have the similar situation where we got to wait a year for a project, depend on the timing, which is sometimes going to be out of everyone's control. And we got to, what we believe is a great price for the low bid.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, just to add one more. Appreciate your comment about is it the right time to do that? We've just been operating under the staff have been operating under the guidance of trying to move the project. I think it's a fair question for you all to consider, but the mayor's points and we're working underneath a bid contract as well. This is the the direction we're going. We do need to take action. That's sort of how we've been operating, but it's a, it's a valid point and I appreciate the comment and I think that's for you.
Councilman Pro.
Been a few years since the details were presented. Can you remind us if there's benefit to other properties outside of the civic block perimeter? If I recall correctly, there, there are going to be benefits beyond just that site for other parcels or other properties in downtown by finishing this, correct? Or is my memory poor?
Mr. Mayor and Councilwoman Pro, I might defer a little bit to Public Works if they're sitting there behind me. I think ultimately, when you improve a piece of infrastructure, there's a benefit to everybody that's served by that. But that's, that would be the the first thing that I would.
Phone a friend.
There's value anytime you replace and put in new infrastructure, there's value in the increase the longevity of that infrastructure. And that serves the downstream users or that benefits the downstream users. I think the one thing that is important to keep in mind is at one point, this project contemplated going additional blocks to the north. Because of the cost of that, that was scaled back. So the the benefit to those properties further to the north is not what it used to be. And so there's really no other project or no other parcels that are directly impacted besides those at the civic block. But like I say, downstream users will benefit from the fact that there's new infrastructure delivering that and that's going to provide better service.
Councilman Schrader.
What other benefits? And I, I'm not, Dave, I'm not sure if you're the right person to argue this to, but what other benefits are there to the city? Besides, I understand if we, if we put, you know, money into something, it's worth more. That, that, that's always going to be true, though. And I have concerns around the timing, but what are the other benefits of doing this? Is there something around the the site that this improves the site? Like, how does it make it more usable? I guess, help me understand what other benefits. If, let's say that we never build, I hope not, but let's say that we can't figure it out. There's no good way to pay for it and we don't build a community center for ten years. How could this site be improved to make our existing community center more usable?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, maybe a question, how could, how does this improvement improve this site?
Yeah.
Again, taking a piece of infrastructure that currently bisects a project cross diagonally. Anytime anything's going to happen there in the future, going to have to deal with it. And so by doing it today, in today's dollars, it's really the simple explanation of if nothing else happens and this is just the relocation, you're getting new infrastructure that services that piece of infrastructure. Clearing out a site that says there is a vacant site that has one less impediment to it. That's the best way I can describe the the long term benefits of doing just this project.
Councilman Schrader.
I was thinking more along the lines of, and I don't, I just don't have it in front of me, but here's how, you know, here's the square footage of the site that becomes usable, that's not accessible right now. You know, we could expand the parking, we could expand the footprint of the building. I'm assuming those things are all true. I just, I don't recall how much of the site is dissected.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I don't have the, the specifics off the top of my head, we can get them for you. I think ultimately, if you think about various improvements, you know, you plant grass pavement over the top of infrastructure today with agreements. Yes, can sometimes happen depending on where that you go. Second, you start talking about puddings and electrical plumbing, sewer, those types of things, you're digging into the ground. And so now you're not knowing the specific, you're not recalling the specific project off my property up, up my head. But it's tough to say where you're going to put a building over the top of a piece of infrastructure without impact.
We can provide the diagnostic that showcases the amount of space that would be opened up for a building. Because to your point, even if we want to do, it'd be difficult for us to expand our current facility, even if we just wanted to take half of it because of where it cuts through. Is it thirty feet or forty feet that cuts through that property because of the lateral?
Mr. Mayor.
I was going to phone a friend. Mayor Council, I don't recall, it's at least a thirty foot easement that encompasses that irrigation line. It's a fairly large line. I think the pipe that we're replacing it with is a thirty inch diameter. Well, it's got a fairly significant easement across it and it runs across the center of that block. Almost the center is slightly to the west, I believe, closer to our existing building. So you couldn't expand very much until that became a problem because you can't build over the top of it. So any kind of a building you're going to put there is going to be limited in size on either side of that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
All right, just one more question. Forgive me, maybe this is not. Given that a parks facility exists on the site and will potentially to the future, is there a reason that we can't use impact fees? For this project?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Schrader, I defer a little bit to finance and Steve, but my understanding is if it, if a project is identified inside of the impact fee study, you could use impact fees for the project that's identified.
Let's, let's Steve answer that question because it has a little bit more to do.
Mayor, Councilman Schrader, you cannot use impact fees. Mayor, Counselwoman Schrader, you cannot use impact fees to renovate or replace an existing facility. It has to be new. Part of a new project that, it does have to be capital. This is capital, but it doesn't do anything to provide a new facility that's growth-related that the new folks would be paying for.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Schrader.
That's kind of what I was getting at. So would that be true, even if, like, let's say that we were to do this project and it resulted in expanded parking facilities because the area available at the site has now expanded and is more usable? Would that, that count? Or is that, or does it have, help me understand the?
There was an impact fee for a parking facility. I suppose you could. There's not in the current fee.
Let's take it offline. I want to dig into the.
Sure.
Hills. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselman Borden.
To prepare for a discussion on this topic next week or in two weeks. It could help, be helpful if, if any council members have information that they'd like, whether it's a map showing the location of it, whether it's confirming there's no alternative funding source, use of impact fees, things like that. I think it would be great to ask you that now. So you have, or we get what we're all looking for so we can discuss it. It's that date, the next week. Thing that I would ask for is timetable. One of the benefits would be if what you're recommending were to be approved, just provide us that schedule that says it's approved, then we would presume the construction would start this month and be finished this month. And that's the window where there's some benefit to hitting this particular window when you could do it. That would be helpful to see.
Mr. Mayor, Counselman Borden, I appreciate that comment. Rough timeline, the construction season is now until March 15th due to the irrigation.
Again, I'm not, not, we could not, asking you to figure it out now, but just to be able to describe here is when it could fit and it could fit and it could finish. If you approve it now, we can finish it by X date and.
One more thing to consider, we have a current bid that we have issued and that bid will expire on the 17th next Friday. So we will open ourselves up to possible escalation charges as we, you know, unless the contractor is willing to hold this price further. And that would be something I'd have to do between Tuesday and Friday if we don't move forward.
Which is the reason why next week is really the week to make decisions one way or the other, either to say no to the bid and I'm not going to presume what it means to River Caddis with the purchase. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselwoman Perro.
Thank you. I appreciate Counselman Borden bringing up specifics. For me, I would specifically like to know pros and cons of leaving this for the next purchaser or developer of this property versus doing it now. The mayor mentioned added value and there's a way for us to get an assessment of what value will be added to the property by, by doing it, just, just a rough current valuation, I realize that we can't project in the future, but let's talk with our real estate contacts about, you know, how much value that does bring, whether, whether the value's monetary or not. And also, or is it just value of marketing? It would, you know, if, if we were to, to put out an RFP for the development of it again, is that going to bring us more applicants because it's done or not? That kind of thing.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Counselman Hovland, thank you.
Yeah, you know, there, there is that adage about time is money and by not moving it, this U R D expires in 2040. You know, next year, that's 16 years. You're not going to be pulling the revenue in over that longer period of time. And if, if we get, there was another interested party that was a part of that, that request for proposals and bids previously. If they come in next year, it's irrigation season, they have to wait another year to make that move. Time is money. And we're losing out on revenue. So if there are things that you think, well, maybe MDC should reimburse the city or other options, we can explore that. But again, any delays is going to delay any activity on that site and doing something that generates revenue to our economy, to our downtown and the vibrancy. And if someone comes in, and I know the, the commercial markets are, are somewhat questionable, but there might be someone coming in who, they don't have to rely on those commercial markets quite as much. So who knows? That's all I have to say on that.
And if it's a financial issue, the city could, as was mentioned, we could enter it into a reimbursement agreement with MDC if that's an important component for the city to consider.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Schrader.
Yeah, I'd like to understand some of the details around the reimbursement agreement, whether that's a viable option.
Ask Ms. Squires, reach out to you with that, because I know she's listening.
Great.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Counsel, we've reached the end of our work session. We have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Close nay.